9:00 PM, so I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting for Monday, September 27, 2021. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lanyon?
Present.
Hanson, Pratt?
Present.
Bellinger?
Present.
Reins?
Present.
Gilroy? Present. We did receive a notification from Councilman Hanson that he would not be available for this evening, so I'm looking for a motion to excuse his absence. Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'm looking for approval of the agenda this evening unless there's changes to be made.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do I have support? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now, we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. It looks like I might have somebody here. Did you want to come up? Anything to say?
Lots to say, but we'll save it.
All right. Thanks, Ken. Thanks for being here. We have the council meeting minutes of August 23, 2021. I'm looking for approval of those council meeting minutes unless there's changes that need to be made or drawn to our attention. Oh, yes.
I have one change.
Okay.
On page two, let's see, one, two, three, four, five lines down, it should be Inland County Board of Commissioner instead of Board of Attorney.
Okay. All right. Oh, yeah, right here at the very top, eight C?
Yep.
All right.
Board of Commissioner.
All right. That change is duly noted, so we had change. I'm looking for a motion to approve those council meeting minutes of August 23, 2021.
I'll move to approve council meeting minutes as amended for August 23, 2021.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving along, Noah, we have accounts payable. We missed our last council meeting due to a power outage, so I believe you have two ledgers that you need right forward.
That is correct. And again, I got a chance to go through all those invoices and receivables for those dates. So, that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve check 74668 dated 8/20 to check 74723 dated 9/2, and a total of $312,077.61, and that does include ACH 129 to 138 for my first motion.
All right. Do I have support for that motion, or are there questions?
Second.
All right. Thank you so much. Holly, will you call the roll for the first set of ledgers? Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right. And the next set.
Again, I had an opportunity to review them all. Everything was in proper order, and you guys all had those calculations this evening. So, I would like to make a motion to approve check 74668 dated 8/16 to check 74756 dated 9/17, and 74724, excuse me, and the other one was correct, and ACH 139 to 143 for a total of $889,954.77.
I think it's 899.
It's 899.
Oh, 899. I'm just writing wrong. 899. A lot of numbers to look at, so there's my motion.
Well, thank you so much, Noah, for going through both of those packets. I appreciate that. Any questions regarding that second ledger? I'm looking for support then to move that forward.
Second.
All right. Thank you so much. Holly, will you call the roll for that second ledger? Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right. Moving along, we have a lengthy action items list. However, some of them are pretty short, so I don't know necessarily that this is going to be a long list, but we will go ahead and start out with an appointment of Jessica Modert for the Downtown Development Authority for a term to expire 6/30 of 2020. For I'm looking for that motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jessica Modert to the Downtown Development Authority for a term to expire 6/30 of 2020.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you so much. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have the council resignation and the new appointment timeline. We received the resignation of Councilman Weiss. This was on our last packet. Again, we had a power outage, therefore, we were not able to convene earlier this month. So, I'm looking for a motion to accept the resignation of Councilman Weiss and set that appointment timeline.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Councilman Weiss with a grant direct to the city clerk to accept applications to fill the city council vacancy until October 6, 2021, with review and interviews taking place at the October 11 regular city council meeting, with final decision also being made at the October 11, 2021 council meeting.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding this? No? Holly, will you call the roll, please? Yes, or Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
All right. So, for our viewing audience out there, we will be accepting the applications that can be found on our City of Williamson website for the vacancy of city council, and you can submit those to our city hall offices. Our next action item is the appointment of council member to NISA as a representative, and that is the North Inland Eastern Service Area. And I was able to speak with Councilman Pratt, asking if he would be the alternate, or be that representative. Noah Bellinger is our alternate for that, so I would like to go ahead and make that appointment, and I'm looking for a motion to appoint Tommy Pratt as our Mr. Representative.
And then, I'll become the alternate again?
Yes.
Oh, I'll be...
I think your wife might appreciate that. So, Dan...
I'll make a motion to appoint Tommy Pratt as council representative.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Second.
All right. Thank you so much. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Does that include Bellinger as the alternate?
Yes.
Do I need to add that?
Friendly amendment.
I didn't really, I wasn't sure if we were doing two motions. Make a friendly amendment to add Noah Bellinger as the alternate to NISA.
A second friendly amendment.
Thank you so much. All right. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
All right. And if you have not gotten the schedule of meetings yet, Holly, can you send that to Ken?
I think I, I think you already have.
All right. Excellent.
You should.
Okay. Do it again. All right. Next is the appointment of the council member as backup for accounts payable review. Noah is currently in that role, and I've asked Dan Reins if he would be so willing to take on that duty as alternate when Noah is not available. So, I'm looking for that motion to appoint Dan Reins as the backup accounts payable review.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Second.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
And we've already had discussion that Dan will meet with Noah to go over what the responsibilities and the duties are. All right. Moving along, we've got our Pitney Bowes lease agreement, and we've got Rachel here. Hi, Rachel. How are you?
Hi. Good. How are you?
Good. So, I'll just go ahead and turn this right over to you.
It's basically very similar to the lease agreement we had five years ago with a slight increase per quarter. The really good thing about this is we didn't have to go out to bids because the state of Michigan did that for us. They contract, or they go out for bids through their My Heal program, and different entities are able to kind of take advantage of that bulk pricing. And so, Pitney Bowes was awarded the contract with the state My Heal program, and we can take advantage of that.
Excellent. Any questions for Rachel while we have her here? All right. I'm looking for a motion then for this to move forward for the Pitney Bowes lease agreement.
I'll move to approve the 60-month lease agreement of Pitney Bowes for the Sun Pro C auto mailing system and authorize City Treasurer Rachel Piner to execute the documents.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Support.
All right. Thank you so much. If there's no other discussion, Holly, will you call the roll? Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
All right. Next on our agenda, or action item list, we have the Michigan Liability and Property Pool Director Election. It's pretty straightforward. We do this, and they give us the recommended nominees. So, I'm looking for a motion to move that forward with the candidates they have listed. It looks like the ballot is on page 11. I know there's not a recommended motion written for us typically like we have, but...
And for the recommendation...
Yes, Tim, that would be fantastic.
A motion could be made to vote for Robert Clark, Thad Beard, and Dan Swallow as directors for the Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool for the three-year terms beginning January 1, 2022.
All right.
I would like to make the motion as well stipulated eloquently by our city council.
Thank you so much. Is that acceptable?
Sure.
All right. Awesome. Do I have support for that motion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right. Next on our list, we have the first reading on ordinance for parking regulations. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Corey. This was discussed through our DDA, and Noah was present for that meeting as well. I've been present during discussions leading up to that DDA meeting, so Corey, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Sure. So, yeah, parking has been a hot topic with the DDA, and particularly in the southeast quadrant. We've got a couple of different meetings. We had a public hearing last week. We invited all the business owners from that district. What really prompted this review was Friday night, I got a text from a business owner. They have a video camera on the parking lot, and there is a still of a car parked in one of our signed loading zones, which has been signed since the parking lot was developed. And as I've talked with chief about what we can and cannot do as far as violations like that, there's nothing on the books that actually prescribes that that's a violation. So, in other words, you can have a sign, but unless you have either an ordinance or a traffic control order that stipulates that, there's not a lot we can do about it in the field. And I think we all agree that that's not really the intent of a signed loading zone is to not park there for two hours. So, as we worked on this, I worked with Tim's office to try to craft an ordinance that would give us the ability to put in place those kinds of regulations that would be in public parking lots. Currently, our ordinance has some references to parking zones and spaces, but I think as Tim and I discussed it, we really think that's more so like on-street parking spaces. So, this is really the first step to have the ability for that to happen, and then if there were certain orders that were to be put in place, those would have to come back to council to be made permanent. The chief can issue a traffic control order, and it's good for up to three months, I believe it is. After that, in order to become permanent, city council has to vote on those. I guess I'll leave it at that if there's any questions. We have a first reading tonight, and then there'd be a second reading at the October eighth meeting.
Sure. Dan? No, I'm going to go ahead and call him because I felt that he had a question.
Obviously, this is, we need to give chief the ability to regulate these things, and obviously, it's going to come back to us. But do we have a feeling where we're going to go with this? I know in your background, you mentioned a couple of spaces in that parking lot in the south quadrant, is that we're going to need two spaces for like half-hour time limits? Or what are, I guess, I'm...
Yeah, so...
If I'm asking for too many specifics, and we're getting into that down the road...
You're good. You should have attended the DDA meeting. Click them on.
I'm sorry.
I just, no, no, no.
Corey had a great presentation. We talked about, you know, 30-minute signs. We talked about certain spaces closer to the buildings, you know, other, they could park in others. It comes down to a basic situation where some of the business owners have employees, and those employees are parking right up next to the building, staying there for eight hours at a shot. And so, if we could move them back a little bit and make them walk a little farther just to give patrons the opportunity to park closer, this is basically what they're looking for.
Right. And we do have that agreement with the United Methodist Church for their overflow parking area, so hopefully, this doesn't become too much of a burden on that quadrant in general, but it has been probably, I would say, the only parking lot we have in the downtown area that has problems. We've not really had any issues with the large parking lot on the northwest, not really anything over here because we've got McCormick Park parking lot, which is, you know, directly behind the parking lot and behind 109. There's really not a parking lot, so to speak, on the, you know, the south side, the southwest side. So, really, this one is only the one that really has given us a lot of heartburn, so to speak.
Well, and that's where most of our, not all of our retail, but a lot of our retail is located over there, but you also have three restaurants and you have the theater over there.
Right.
So, it's a lot of mixed use. The retail wants everybody out of there in a hurry, but then you have restaurants that want people to sit there for two hours and drink cocktails and have dinner. I guess that's... And there was some talk about having, for a certain period of time, maybe you want to talk to that, Corey, but it was from like, what was it, 8:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night?
Right.
And then, you can park pretty much where you need to.
Right.
So that it's not going to affect the restaurants and the Bistro.
And the theater is going to be coming back online. They are going to start having face-to-face live performances again, so I think with, you know, and you and I talked about it, and plus being in previous DDA meetings, you know, we're not mandating it for the entire parking lot. We're starting out very slow and gently with several spaces, but it's going to be more or less money through Friday is our big concern, I think.
Yeah. So, again, this is just to basically give us the ability, so I stopped short of that full detail.
I got you.
But we had, you know, close to an hour public hearing on it, and, you know, I had a, we have actually some data where we tried to understand the influence on public parking in each of the quadrants, and so that, you know, should this go forward, we would bring that forward and give council the opportunity to see all that and, you know, weigh it as well. But we can't do that unless this ordinance goes forward.
I got you, and I have no problem with this as written. I was just curious if we, and I'm, you're always thorough, and I know you and I on the end game. I guess I was just looking for a glimpse of that as we were doing this. Absolutely. And again, a lot of people don't even understand that the far side of the St. Mary's Church is available as well. They only just have a hind.
Right. And I think this is a very good first step to parking within the community, because as we continue to grow, as different businesses come into the community, we may experience it in other parking lots. And so, if we take this approach now, it will be easier to take this approach later on, you know, or if we need to step up parking enforcement and go to that next level. So, I think that we're doing right by that quadrant of business owners over there to make it a little bit more easier for their patrons to come.
I guess I'm looking at this as we're allowing, we're allowing chief the opportunity to draft some things, and then we'll figure that out from there. Is that basically...
Yeah. We've been working through this, you know, what, I think we first sat in that parking lot two, three months ago and just kind of observed what was happening, and, you know, through letters, through personal discussions that I've had, we cannot get people to park one lot beyond. And so, it does really create a crunch. It's not all the time, and certainly not on Mondays, but as you get into the late afternoon, it's tough sledding at times back there, so.
It's also changing because certain restaurants are open for lunch now. And I think we're going to have more of that coming back as people can get staffing and whatnot. Sorry, I just thought, I'm probably moving ahead again, but I know a lot of our larger buildings along Grand River and some along Putnam have apartments above them. Does that quadrant have a lot of that?
There are three units that have apartments in that L-shaped block. There's, I'm sorry, there's three buildings, and there's three total units. That is far as I am aware, there might be, I think that's the fewest, but I could be getting wrong, on the southwest side, but that one has the fewest. There are, of those three units, I'm trying to think. I know two of them are two-car households that generally park there. One of them, you know, without air and all their business, they're a third shift employee, so they, you know, they have a car there in the day and they have a car there in the night, and we've gotten to know them a little bit when we did the parking lot project.
So, it's not as dense with apartments as it is on the other side of the river?
Correct. Correct. Yep.
Chief? Any input, comments?
I think it's moving in the right direction. I think it's the right thing to do. From my perspective, and my direction to my guys will be is, this is going to be a grace period, learning period, growing period. We're not coming out with parking tickets and hammering everybody. This is going to be say, hey, here's your warning, and give them instructions, tell them how to improve it. Probably about the second or third time, it'll be a parking ticket then. But again, it's, I think it's a small core group, like Corey said, of employees who are just taking the easy way out, and I think once we get them going the direction that we wish them to go, I think, I don't see any issues after that.
And we're talking a couple parking spaces. We're not talking half the lot.
Correct. Yes.
Yep. And again, as the alternate, I attend all the DDA meetings, and we had good representation from those owners and from the residents for those spots to talk about different owners, and a lot of it is going to be an educational process.
Sure.
Of understanding the needs of...
Right. And this problem, actually, I mean, this isn't something that just happened three months ago. This has been a, this has been an issue, and we've discussed it over the past several years, and even before we had the parking lot project. And so, we were able to increase the number of spaces with parking lot project, and now I think, you know, this is probably the right direction, just to get a little bit more conformity with that particular area. So...
With that being said, and attending all the DDA meetings...
Yes. Thank you, Noah. I appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend the City of Williamson Code of Ordinances by revising Chapter 66, Article 4, as the two parking regulations.
Excellent. Do I have support for this?
Second.
All right. Thank you. Any other further discussion or questions? All right. Holly, will you call the roll? Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on, we have a patrol vehicle purchase. I'm going to go ahead and turn this right over to chief.
It was put in the budget, I think, prior to chief Bobby Young put that in there for his departing, to purchase another vehicle. I know in the past, the PD has routinely traded patrol cars in. This year, I'm looking to do something different. My reason behind that is, is we have the white Impala that the reserves use, and it's getting old. It's falling apart. We're routinely replacing things on it. It's in a garage right now, getting worked on. So, my thought is, that thing is on its last leg, and sooner or later, it's going to have to go somewhere. With that being said, we still have several reserves that are very active. We have very active parades, to believe, where we require marked units with lights to block off intersections. One of our vehicles is that Humvee, which I'm not a fan of, in my personal opinion, but it's got the lights that helps do the job. So, that's my reasoning of getting a fourth unit or patrol car, so we're all the same with the equipment in it, in the event of one of our other cars do go down. I mean, they're fairly good on mileage. My 17 is getting quite up there. I've got a car, my 2019 is down right now. It's got a camber out, so we're not using that, so we're down a car. So, is this more of a backup plan for sustainability?
Excellent.
That's my reason for that, and I know the cost is a little bit more above than what we anticipated. I'm still down a body, so that savings is coming into play there with the anticipation of finally filling on that spot in December.
Okay. Excellent. So, questions? I've been through different vehicle purchases and all that type of stuff, but I know I've got new council members sitting here, so questions for chief?
Have you ever thought about border cycles?
We have two bicycles.
We'll let the guy choose. For this price, I could buy you a bicycle. There's still a yellow shirt floating around to wear when you ride the bike.
Yeah, I'm sure there is.
I'm still looking for that.
Yeah, sure. It may be found, it might not. Well, I think it's the right thing to do. I think moving forward and with the growth of the department and any type of future growth, I think it's a smart move, and that's going to bring you up to four interceptors, which will be nice. I know that we always had a kind of a balance of Chevy and Ford, so that'll be nice if they're all going to be in that one brand family. Do you foresee wanting to trade in that 17 possibly next year or the following year, and then add another new vehicle down the road? Or do you think the 17 has capability? you think the seventeen has capability? I know it's got seventy-eight thousand miles, but do you think that's, what, what do you think the longevity of the seventeen is?
I don't have the experience, the time for that yet.
Okay.
To, to have that answer. I don't know how routinely many miles we repeat it, I'm gonna put them on. So far, it's, it's running well. We just did new brakes on it, so it's, it's still in good shape, but new tires on it. So it's still a good running patrol car.
Okay. All right. All right, well, I think that, I think it's a, a great plan, a great idea, and with that being said, if there's no other questions for Chief?
I wonder how he's gonna make up the budget deficit of money.
Okay, that is a good question. Well, and like he said, he's, he's down an officer right now, so do you wanna elaborate anything on that, or?
I think the, what, if I ballpark figure, the savings of that officer is twenty-five thousand?
Okay, so you've covered it.
Okay.
I think I'm okay.
Okay, all right, excellent. All right, well, with that being said, then, I am looking for the motion to move this forward, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the spend of the sixty-two thousand to purchase and equip the twenty-twenty-one Ford utility police interceptor Explorer from Signature Auto Group off the McComb County State of Michigan bid contract.
All right, excellent. Do I have support?
Seven.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Okay, can I have the roll call, please? Bellinger?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanning?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, coming to my two least favorite action items of the evening. What? I have an action before me to accept the city manager resignation for Corey. He and I had a great conversation this past week, and I so appreciated the fact that you took the time to call each council member and board chair personally, and work with staff, to let them know about your, your new opportunity. So I'm gonna go ahead and just turn this over to you real quick, if you wanna share with our viewing audience. I mean, I don't know if you're gonna get the vote you're looking for, but, but anyways, it is, it is with sincere regret, because I have thoroughly enjoyed having you as our city manager. When we went through this interview process, when we knew that we were gonna be bringing somebody on, it was hands down unanimous that you were the right pick for the city to move us forward, help us grow, and you've done that. And so I will sadly accept it, and I will call for a roll call, but I wanna go ahead and give you the opportunities.
I don't have a lot to say. I, you know, said what I wanted to say in the letter. I think the only thing I forgot to say was just thank you to the current council, and, you know, as well as the council that was in place when I was hired. I think, as I put in, in the letter, when you're looking for a city manager job, and at least for me, you know, you look at the, the videos, the minutes, and you wanna know what the council's like. And, you know, we have had a great council, even with changeover, and Tommy and Brandon coming on, everybody's been super good to work with. And so I think that that gives me hope that this will be considered an attractive job. I think Williamson, as a community, is just an amazing place. It speaks for itself. We have a wonderful community, a lot of great people that support what we do. And so I, I know I'm leaving a really great opportunity, but as I mentioned, with our second son being born, it's been a real difference in our lives. And, you know, being here on a night like tonight, I'm away from them, and as you guys all know, that happens, you know, fairly frequently during the week. And that was really something that kinda put me over the edge of thinking about doing something different for a little while, while they're, they're in their younger ages. So, yeah, that's where we're at, and I just really just wanna thank the council that's, that's been with us now, and we'll have more cycles with our boards and committees to talk to them. So, and planning to work through the council meeting on November eighth, so I started on a council meeting day, and I'll end on a council meeting night, if, if you'll accept, so thank you.
Well, like I've always said, with council members leaving council, or with staff that has moved on, you know, family is always first, in my opinion. You can't do anything without the support of your family. And so I applaud you for, for doing that, especially with having such a young family. And, you know, as you and I discussed too, I don't think that you're done with, with public service. I think that that will come back at some point in your life, because you're very, very good at it. And I know you're gonna be super successful in the private sector too, so I have no doubt about that. But with that being said, then, I am looking for a motion to accept the resignation of our city manager.
So moved.
Thank you. I'm looking for support.
I'll respectfully second.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions or discussion questions? Okay, Holly, will you call it over, please? Bellinger?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanning?
Yeah.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right. Well, we have you until November eighth, so we're gonna make use of this time and, and really get some things done and, and everything. So with that being said, the very last action item on our list this evening is the city manager's search and next steps. And Corey and I had a discussion with, about that as well, and I know that he probably shared some of that with council members. I would like to follow the process that we followed when we hired Corey. We have a great set of questions. I would certainly entertain additional questions to be added to that. I believe that the job description is adequate, unless there's anything that Corey would like to add to it, based on his experience now in the role. But my hope is that if we go ahead and accept this timeline, that Corey will be able to get this posted as soon as possible. I know when he and I talked about it, I'd really like it posted tomorrow morning when he walks in the door, because I really, I really wanna take advantage of this timeline. I would love to be able to have, if possible, a little carryover where you're, the opportunity to meet the new person, or at least give you enough time to put everything in place, so that when a new manager walks in the door, if you're not here, that he will have our tremendous staff to be able to bring him up to speed. And I can't say enough about our staff during the interim between our previous new manager and when you came on. They were amazing. They got the job done. No steps were missed, and so I look forward to having them lead that again, and I don't think that's gonna be a problem. So, any questions from any council members regarding the timeline that we would like to propose?
My only thought is, I, you know, if, if we can get it posted as soon as possible, so that we can move forward. I remember when I was just coming, coming on to council when Allen was resigning, and one of the first things we did was the search that resulted in hiring Corey, and it seemed like there was a large gap between when Allen offered, told us he was retiring, and when that got posted. And if we could close that this time, that would be good.
I think we'll be able to, just because we really have everything in place, and we didn't at that particular time. So we had to kind of, you know, get up to speed with questions, the description, how we were going to score. And I would like to go ahead and put together a committee to review the applicants, like we did last time. And so I'd like Corey to, I'd like for an email to go out to let us know that the posting is live, so that if anybody, you know, if we know of anybody, that we might, might be a good fit. Certainly, you know, it's an open application process. We're an equal opportunity employer.
Or do you need a motion to have it pushed out position?
I think we have to do the recommended, or the requested action that's at the top of this, on your next, possibly that page.
Might have to work on it a little bit, but.
So I am gonna go ahead and look for that requested action. Oh, yes, Tim.
Well, it sounds like the consensus would be to do this as an in-house, similar to the previous. So forget about all the executive search firms, just.
Yes, yep.
And simply to indicate the next steps, including the in-house procedure that was previously used, with, with any necessary revisions along the same lines.
Okay, all right. Did you get a word down?
Yeah. All right, so I'd move that we, as city council, take the next steps in the city manager's search process, to conduct a search in-house, following the same line that was previously used, and post the position search expeditiously.
Thank you. Do I have support for that motion?
Support.
Thank you very much. Any other further discussion? Okay, Holly, roll, please. Lanning?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our action items for this evening. We do not have any discussion items. We did receive correspondence regarding the American Rescue Plan Act and the Friends of the Williamson Park Campaign. Corey, I do have one question, and I'm gonna throw this out there, with the American Rescue Plan Act correspondence. It states in here that the accord award amount for our non-entitlement unit is four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So that four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is coming to the City of Williamson.
Correct.
What can we do with that? What do we have to use it on, or is it pigeonholed?
It is pigeonholed, but it, it's fairly flexible. If you remember back to, I think it was April, when we talked about this water funding that we were going for, I had said to you at that time, if that money requires a match, this would be at least a significant chunk of that match. Water and sewer infrastructure is considered an eligible expense, and I, I guess that's really the only time we've discussed this funding. It's, it's my recommendation that we don't touch that until that picture becomes clear, but then even if that doesn't go, it will very likely be used, or recommended to be used, on our twenty-twenty-three water sewer project on North Putnam, or at least a, a significant chunk of it would help with that. So I think that we should know about that federal tranche of funds that they had set in the late fall into the first part of twenty-twenty-two. So, I haven't heard a whole lot on it. I, you know, I know it's slow-moving, and it probably still is a bit of a pipe dream, but the fact that we've made it this far is encouraging. So, so that that's gonna be one of those notes I leave, is that that's, that's the intent, is to recommend that it's helping with those projects.
All right, excellent. Okay, moving on, we've got the department had reports. Corey gave us your report. Anything to add, or does anybody have any questions for Corey?
I'll add just one thing. Since then, the road closure at Putnam and elevator occurred, and it's over. We had the paving happen on Sunday morning, so it was opened up to traffic by today. As far as the rest of that project, there, there could be a couple days that there's a little bit of work that happens close to the right of way, where they may have to, you know, cut off a, a part of the road, but traffic will be maintained. And then, the big thing that's happening this week in the, in that project is the jack and bore under the railroad tracks is scheduled to happen on Wednesday. The way I understand that is, once they get under what they call the theoretical embankment of the railroad, they have to keep going until it's done. And so if it takes twenty hours, they just have to keep going. So if that happens, you may see, like, activity going on there at night. You may see lights and commotion. They don't expect that to be the case. The railroad is planning for their person to be there for twelve hours from seven-thirty to seven-thirty. So if everything goes well, and they don't run into anything goofy, they should be done. But just so everybody's aware, that's a, that's a big thing that's happening. They're actually starting to set it up today. If you drive by, you'll see this, I'm not quite sure what it is, but it's the steel encasement that they have to start assembling. So it, it looks pretty interesting over there right now. Other than that, we had a variety of disruptions to neighbors with the water system in the last two weeks. There still will be a couple more on Railroad Street and Cedar Street that are gonna happen down the road here. But from my perspective, even with the, the road closure, you know, people were very patient with us. And so that was wonderful to see. And then I do gotta give a kudos to the businesses on Putnam between Grand River and Middle. There was a closure there last Friday for the feeder install of the beams. If anybody saw that, it was pretty impeccable. I mean, it, it was, they had a massive crane putting beams in, and they had that wrapped up by, like, late afternoon. So, a lot of disruption, a lot of red, or orange barrels, a lot of orange signs. I like to always think that means progress, but I know it is, you know, it's a pain for people. So, just thank you for everybody's patience out there as we got through that, and hopefully we're, we're close to being done with those.
Cool. I'm gonna ask about one other project.
Yeah.
Are we still on track for completion October for the boardwalk?
Yes, we are. Maybe not October first, as far as all the restoration, but I saw them out there. We had a delay in the fencing material, and they've started to install that today. There is a final piece of concrete that has to be done. They've got a lot of the, the restoration completed. So I think that we're really close. I would say it's gonna be in October, rather than at October first.
All right, excellent. Any questions for Corey regarding his report? All right, Chief, you're up next.
Uh, let's see. I think last time we reported on getting new radios.
Yeah.
We've got those.
Excellent.
We've got the earbuds. I was listening to most of that radio traffic while things were going on. Hundred percent more clear. There's no static, there's no missing calls. We're waiting for the patrol cars to get installed. That's gonna be within the next two weeks. I think they had a problem with the installation company. They couldn't meet the order, so they had to go to a different one. Installing patrol cars down at Nisa here in the next few weeks. We hired a third crossing guard, Ms. Nancy Irwin?
Okay.
Irvine, Irvine, excuse me. So she started on Monday.
Where will she be stationed at?
Today. She was down there at the elementary school with myself and Terry.
Okay.
And just trying to, just trying to get.
Her acclimated.
Right.
Okay.
My intent is to have her work with Brenda a little bit as well, and just to make my bench a little bit deeper. So if somebody calls in sick, somebody's got something going on, I've got somebody to take over. If we're not available, we're on an emergency call, so somebody's not leaving the kids by themselves. We've gotten some complaints about traffic down by East Church Street and Venetter.
Okay.
With crossing right in that area, so we're doing little things to try to just make that a little more safe for the kids. My, I think my intent is to put her there when it's all said and done, 'cause I prefer to stay down by the elementary school, just to help direct traffic. I don't wanna put that on them. I think it's better from a law enforcement official. So that's, that's the intent behind that, but I have not had the opportunity to get down on Church and Venetter, just to see what's going on yet. We've got a few concerns. I've talked with the superintendent, and he's expressed something from, from parents.
Okay.
So we're just trying to make sure that everybody's safe. Speaking of the elementary school, I think I reported that when school started, it was pretty high-take with traffic and parents to begin with.
I was just gonna ask how it's going.
We've made some adjustments. The last adjustment I made starting this year was, we're stopping traffic on Church, and when those buses are coming in and going out, we just run them right through them. So, doing the math, you got fifteen, twenty buses at ninety feet, that's, that's a lot of cars, a lot of space. And it's, it's just frigging up tremendously. I can usually, we usually have them out there by eight-twenty-five, and that's, the only reason we, we'll still be there is if they're just regular kid. But it's, it's going very well. I heard tons of compliments, parents, at least once a day, so there's just thanks for being out here. So they, they appreciate it, they see it.
Good. I can tell you I've not seen any social media posts about traffic at the elementary school in the past three weeks, so you're doing something right, because that's usually the hot topic at this particular time of year. So.
It, it, it's, it's great that we've got that many kids, but it's bad that we got that many cars trying to get such through a bad spot. I mean, you know, the easiest fix was move those buses.
Yeah.
And I, and the bus drivers love it.
Good.
And they were saying, you know, when it's hot, and those buses are sitting, those kids are dogging.
Oh, yeah.
So the faster you get those things moving, get that air flowing through them, everybody's happier. So it's worked out pretty good so far, so I don't, I don't, I'm not sure what tweaking I can do yet without changing infrastructure.
Wow. Well, and you know, I, I think that we're, I think that having an open conversation with the school board and with Adam Superintendent, to see what they can do on their end, because at the end of the day, it's really, I think, their responsibility to, and we're doing everything we can to make sure that it's safe. And, and so I hope that the working relationship, you know, continues to improve for, you know, everybody, especially the neighbors, the neighborhood. Well, you know, keep us posted.
Yeah, no, like I said, I think it's going really good, and a lot better than it was when I first started kinda sitting there watching going, boom. And I'm pretty sure Corey told me that was gonna be one of the hot topics I needed to look at.
Oh, sure.
To fix.
The cars start backing up, the light's going.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's always been a hot topic, you know. You know, I, I don't know. There's probably something else that could be done, but like I said, that's really on the school board and the administration to make those significant changes. So, good work. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's going good, and I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from folks. The PD's running good. Like I said, we're looking to fill our last spot in December, when a young man graduates from the academy.
Awesome, excellent. How's, how's traffic and everything been with having football games in town again? Sports activities, all that type of stuff?
They've had some issues on Friday night. They've had to do some traffic directing to get them out of the football game. They said it's, it's been pretty packed. Been nice to have, you know, at least two cars on, but I think we do, 'cause we put a reserve down there, so there's one car, and then we get the full-time officer to help out, so. Yeah, but yeah, people are coming out. They said it was full.
Good.
So that's, that's a lot of fun to see that.
Yeah, it's good to see activity in town again. All right, excellent. Well, thanks so much. Any questions for Chief? All right. Okay, I am looking for anybody that would like to share committee or some of your reports. So, Noah, I'll start with you.
I had an opportunity. We had another cemetery board meeting last week, and we had an introduction from a design team to look at some pathways, different alternatives in the back, what I would call the back forties.
It, it was a, an area that had been, it's the, it's the back area of the cemetery that had been too low for a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty years since the cemetery moved there to, for burials to begin. When the, when the river was all dredged up and they did the compensating cut, a large portion of the filter that was there was put in this area, which brought it up easily in some places, a good ten feet, and it can now be, have burial.
And they were really articulating the opportunity to have scattered areas. So some flower beds, some trees, some donations, and they had two different designs that they presented, and then they're gonna go back and do some redesigning, because they were looking at plots that were gonna be four foot by four foot, or four foot by five foot. There, there was all this technical stuff.
The question was, I believe, I, I wasn't in the meeting, but I, I got it. I got an update from Sexton. In the regular, in the normal area of the cemetery, plots are four feet wide by ten feet long. And the ideal with this rear area of the cemetery is they would like to do green burials, and the belief is because you're not going to be in a casket, and you're not going to have a vault, the space can be narrower.
So they were gonna do a, a grid with a computer system and all this, and come back with redesigns.
All right.
So that's where we're at.
Excellent.
Great meeting. I learned a lot about grave sizes.
All right.
I'm sure you.
And Brandon, have you had any meetings?
We have one seven a.m. meeting for Tifa, because as Corey mentioned in his report, there was some non-hazardous dirt that had to get replaced, so we had to meet to do special authorization, which got done. Other than that, nothing more.
Tommy, have you got any meetings?
I did have a Parks and Rec meeting, since we were all asked together, and it was a little bit of a, a lot of discussion. And the two main things that came from it is they've decided to, one, put the no dunking signs on the basketball hoops at the park.
Try on.
Yeah, yep. And then see how that goes. They need to take further steps later than they may.
Okay.
And the second was in regards to the electronic, the digital board sign that you talked about a little bit in the past. They, it was decided to kind of move forward with the idea of an approval to come to city council with a location. We've specifically narrowed down a location, but somewhere in one of the city locations. And, you know, we told them there was lots of other questions regarding that, that I'm sure will come up, but at least, that's about as far as that got.
All right, thanks. Dan, did you have any meetings?
No.
Ooh, yeah, lucky. Okay. All right, we have another opportunity for audience participation. Five minutes per presentation. Anybody? presentation, anybody?
I just want to, Kent Hall, five oh nine Red Cedar Boulevard. I had the honor of nominating Tammy, the first time she became mayor. So I would say that was a pretty good success. I also had the honor to nominate Corey.
The city manager. Well, thank you, Ken, we appreciate it. And we know that he's done good work. You did good work while you were sitting up here too, and him. So with that being said, I'll move along to council member comments. I know that you gave your subcommittee comments, but I'll go ahead and start down here this time with Dan, anything?
One quick thing, so the Jubilee Committee met and had our formal wrap-up meeting for the 2020 Jubilee, and one of the big things that was decided was that the Jubilee is officially moving back to June. The 2021 dates for Jubilee will be June twentieth through the twenty-sixth.
Twenty twenty-two, you mean?
Twenty twenty-two, yes, I'm sorry.
And what was that in June?
June twentieth through the twenty-sixth. So going back to the third full week in June is, as we've done prior to this year.
All right, excellent. Okay, Tammy.
Nothing much for me, other than thanks, Corey. I'm sorry to see you go, but thanks for being a supporter through my first few months here at City Council.
Brandon?
I'll just echo what Tommy said. We're gonna miss having you around, but thanks for the time you had this month there.
Noah?
Corey, thank you. It's been a honor, I've worked with you for a hundred years now, and look forward to having you, still be contacting us. I'm embarrassed, so.
Thank you, thanks.
I'm just gonna echo what everybody else said. You will be truly missed by the community, because I know you've been out and about, present at a lot of the different service organization meetings. And you'll be missed here in this chambers by all of us, by your staff. You've been a very good leader for this community to help it grow in such, really, a short span of time. You tackled some big projects. And so I hope that we are lucky enough to get somebody that will continue to carry your good work forward, because I think you've really taken us into that next step, having a city manager be in place. And I know you won't be too far away. I know that we'll still have a connection. So I look forward to, you know, us moving forward, us working together to bring that next city manager in and under your guidance before you leave. And I have no doubt in my mind that, you know, everything will be in place where it needs to be for your successor. I have no doubt about that. Just a reminder, you know, it is fall, seasons are changing. As we move into October, we're going to be starting the no parking on city streets between two AM and five AM, because you never know what Mother Nature in Michigan can bring. So that's just that friendly reminder, it's from October through March. Just be aware that we're gonna be going into time change as well. There are kids out on bikes and school buses, so be aware of your surroundings as you're driving through town. Take that little bit of extra time if you see activities or events going on. It's great to see everything alive again with ballgames being played in town. It's exciting to see the theater get ready, to have another, you know, to go back live in-person productions. So that's exciting. And just excited to have the change of season here and start working through our next steps in the city and have some projects come to completion. And again, we've got that council seat available, applications are available on the city website. If you have questions, please don't hesitate to call if you think you have interest in serving. We also have other boards that have seats available, and that information can be found as well on our city website. So with that, I will go ahead and adjourn at seven, what is it, seven fifty-four this evening. Thank you.